Two, one. Good evening, welcome to this hybrid budget work session for the Kent County Public Schools Board of Education. Today is March 29th, 2021, and I'm calling this work session to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is the pledge of allegiance. If you could all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, this is an action item, is the approval for the, or of the agenda this evening. We are looking to, just to update the agenda, we're going to move the board retreat discussion before the budget discussion. So that's the one update that we're going to make, so if that is okay with anyone, we'll ask for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
A motion to approve the amended agenda.
We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Dr. Costa, is there any further conversation, questions? Hearing them, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There are no opposition. The agenda is amended and passed as presented. Okay, Dr. Capps, the board retreat discussion.
Right. So, I think that the date that we have for the board retreat would be May the 15th, that's a Saturday. And I propose that we have it at Sumner Hall and go from eight o'clock in the morning until two in the afternoon. Now, we could go like later if that's what we choose, but eight to two seems like a reasonable time. We can have a few little breakfast snacks, if you will, and then we can pick up lunch and then work through lunch. So, eight to two is what I'm thinking about, so I think that's good.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of the date, and, you know, we can do that from a timing standpoint, I think eight to two is, is good.
If you think we, you want to go at oh three, we can do that, I mean, we're there, so. The thing is, you know, it would be, we'd have to leave it open to the public.
Sure.
So, we should, you know, we should put down however much time we think we're gonna need.
Do we have any stipulated time restraints at Sumner Hall, have they expressed any, okay?
They said the building is ours for as long as we need.
Well, can we, can we go eight to three, and then if we have to cut it short, we can do so, but at least we'll communicate it out to the public that it's eight to three?
Okay.
And then that way, if it goes eight to two, great? Or not so great, depending on the good work that we're going to put in. Keep it going.
That's fine.
Okay.
And what I thought is we could order and then just go pick it up and bring it back and then just work through lunch.
Yeah, I think that's great. All right. Okay, so the, the second, or the next item on the agenda is the FY '22 preliminary budget presentation. This is a work session, so this is just for discussion and information purposes, so, Dr. Capps, I'll open the floor to you.
Okay, so you'll see that this first page has been updated again, so it's updated on March the 29th. Nothing has changed, everything remains the same as we've gone through. Essentially, you'll see again all of the budget requests. We have a requirement to update minimum wage, so there's the cost to that. We have not bought furniture, school furniture, in over 25 years, so I think that's a reasonable amount. And that is really just gonna make a small dent into what we have to do. My suggestion would be that this needs to be a multi-year allocation so that we can start replacing some of the desks and chairs and tables that need to be replaced. The next item is refinishing the gym floors. This, if any of you have been at the elementary schools, it has, it has not been done probably since, oh, I don't know, probably 10 or 15 years at least. They used to be done on a fairly regular basis when we had staff that could do it, but that has been long gone since, since at least 10 years, so. As you know, we did some work at Galena, there was construction there, and we also had construction at Rock Hall, and those two floors have taken a pretty good beating since the construction happened at the schools. So, this is not an over-the-top cost for redoing the elementary schools, and I think it would add so much more value and aesthetic pleasing atmosphere for the kids and for the teachers. So, my recommendation is we do that as well. The painting of the gyms, I don't even know when that's been done either, and the gyms are in really bad shape. If you're gonna have a new floor, it makes sense to go ahead and paint all the gyms. And you'll note that at the middle school, they've done some repair work in the gym, so that there needs to be some painting done in the gym there as well, so to paint all of the gym, you'll see that amount that is needed for that.
Can I ask just a quick question on the refinishing floors and then the painting? That looks like, what, $23,000? Is there, is there, is that just not, could we potentially, I'm just curious, just down the road, find somebody that can do both at the same time and have a company or contractor do this, that does both? Does that, does that be, I don't know?
I think they're too spec, they're, they're too, yeah, they're, they're not really, they're, they're pretty specialized tasks.
Is it possible that the county's crew could do the painting or some portion of it?
I don't know that the county has a painting crew, if that's what you're asking. I don't, I don't believe that they do, I think they have people that do roadwork and those kinds of things, but they don't have, they don't have the number of facilities that we have, so I seriously doubt they would have a painting crew.
Dr. Capps, of these items, what's the most important thing? All of them, so this isn't in some order of preference?
I, I would say that the first four items are, in my opinion, are have-tos. We need to be taking care of our facilities, I think that this is something that we should be doing. The Kent County Middle School inner scholastic sports, I guess one could argue whether one, whether we need that? Is that, is that a requirement? You heard presentation about this from the staff last year, and this was something that they felt would be very important to the families and to the students, and help us to recruit students that tend to go to private middle schools because they have inner scholastic sports. So, it would really round out the programming at the middle school itself. The bus contractor increase, that's required, and the 2% salary increase for the nursing staff is a state mandate and a state requirement, so everything on this page, in my opinion, are things that we really need to do. The Kent Blended Learning Academy, this is our virtual programming that we had in place, and if we continue to do it next year, we're gonna have to add in a little more money for the teachers that are gonna have to teach in the program, so that's really a minimal increase, but it will round out the program that we started. The .5 Secretary of Transportation, I think with more of our after-school programming and more of our tutoring that's after-school and transportation that's running late in the evening, you really need to have a part-time individual that's going to be in the transportation office all day long dealing with those kinds of requests that are coming through. As you know, we have one individual that's working a split shift, so it's very difficult. That is one of the departments that is not covered with multiple secretaries, so this is really a small investment to gain coverage and public relations for our families, so I think that that's an important aspect as well. The fuel increase for the buses is required, well, the fuel increase is required because of the increase in oil. Oil has gone up, so the fuel has gone up as well, so we figure that that is a realistic amount for increasing the budget. Bus maintenance, as you know, we had new buses, they're, they still have a few years on them, and so now it's gonna, as time goes on, we're gonna have to start investing in the, in making some maintenance improvements and just your typical maintenance that's gonna happen as the buses age. And then food service supervision, that, I really believe that this is necessary because we've got retirements happening and we've got the department that needs to be at least managed pretty much on their own.
Isn't that self-supported, though?
That is self-supported, so we have, that's the other thing. This is not gonna come out of the operational budget, really, per se, so in essence, it's on this PowerPoint, but it's not going to be anything that's going to come directly out of, in other words, if we say, oh, we don't need to do this, you're not really saving any money because it's coming out of the food service department budget. But I want it to be with full disclosure, we wanted to make sure we put that on the, on the PowerPoint. Unless Mr. Silver wants to come back.
He'd be a great food service support supervisor.
Why not? Why not?
So, when you add up all of those, the two pages, it's 286,840. Now, my question is, that 286, does that include the 16,000 or do we, or do we end? Okay. So, honestly, it's, it's less than that.
It's 280, or 270, 270, 840.
The next page are the things that we really need to spend some time talking about, block scheduling, and we can, let's say that for a minute, because I've got some information I wanted to share about block scheduling. But the two literacy coaches have been taken off of the list, and the early childhood coordinator has been taken off the list. And you'll see in other, in other pages, as we go down to the PowerPoint, we've, we've taken those, they're removed. So, the only thing we really need to talk about is block scheduling in terms of what does that look like? And how would we fund it, and what is the feeling of the board? So, in order to get to that conversation, I think we need to update the information about what we know with Kerwin. So, let me go ahead, oh, we should talk a little bit about the placeholder for salary increase. So, that is how much we have proposed to keep in mind for the, the salary placeholder. And the healthcare placeholder, those are have-tos from my, from my perspective, and then the increase in fixed charges, those are all have-tos, and if you look at that, that amounts to about $780,000.
Can we go back a minute to slide 12 for the first budget request? And some of these items are gonna be one time, and some of them are gonna become yearly?
Right, so which? The school furniture, I would propose is a multi-year allocation, we're gonna have to do that for several years in a row to get us up to where we need to be. The, I don't think that we're gonna have to paint the gyms every year, and I don't believe we're gonna have to finish the gym floors every year, but everything else is gonna have to be funded. So, so essentially, there is about $33,000 there that is not gonna have to be funded in subsequent years.
Thank you.
All right, so now. Oops. I went a little bit too far. Okay. So, Ms. Stewart, would you like to talk about this slide?
So, based on the new current O language that, do you think you might want to come up here?
It might be easier for people listening from home.
Okay, so there is new language that is being proposed for new Kerwin. As of now, I do have, no, nothing has been finalized as of yet, but in this new language, it is going to now have a three-year running average of enrollment from fiscal year, I wouldn't say 20 to 18. If that is the case, then the MOE, the MOE that we would receive from the county, the increase would be to $462,999. That's if they pass the new language. So, that would be our increase in our county revenue, and then we would still have our state increase with the whole harness awards, as I was saying, that is the decline in enrollment and the disabled transportation. Now, there's still discussion about that, if that is going to be considered restricted or unrestricted funds, but the amount of the 38413 that's gonna be increased on the state revenue that is still in place. But that would be based on that year average, because current law is basically excluding, no, current law is actually including fiscal year '21, that three-year average with our decline in enrollment, which would be, you know, put it at a decrease for counties, but with the, if the new law passes, then that is excluded, so we'll put us in a better position overall, overall.
So, let me tell you where we're at with legislation at this point. It has passed through the House, it was on the House floor, and the House passed it. It got, it got switched over to the Senate, and right now, the Senate, it's supposed to be on the floor tonight for a vote. So, we should know this evening if it passes, and then once it goes through the Senate, there, there will be a few, my understanding is there are gonna be some final amendments introduced today, and then it's supposed to be voted on the floor of the Senate tonight. Once that's done, I'm not sure if it has to go back over to the House just so that they can reaffirm the, the changes in the amendments, that part I don't know. But once it, essentially, once it passes through the Senate, it's not going to be an issue, then it will have, it'll make both the House and the Senate, and then it goes to the governor for signature. So, let's go back just a second, because that is the new Kerwin language. This is the, based on current legislation, so without the language with Kerwin, we, we feel fairly certain that the language is gonna pass, that the new updated bill will make it through the House and the Senate, will make it through the Senate, and so if you look at this, this was based on current legislation. We took the scenario, basically, and one scenario was everything on the list. Well, I've already told you some things have been taken off the list. We took off the coaches, we took off the coordinator, and so you'll see scenario two, with current legislation, we would still be in the hole, $197,064. So, that's in current legislation. If you go with Kerwin. Oops. Did you want to talk about that one? Or you want to just go straight to the spot? So, this is with the new language with Kerwin. We take in scenario one, which is everything that we talked about, even the coaches and whatnot, which really, that's a non-issue, but we wanted to just compare apples to apples. So, when you look at scenario one, we would still be in the hole, $310,000. But scenario two, when you take out the, we're not talking about block scheduling, because that block scheduling is not in either one of those scenarios. Well, excuse me, block scheduling is in scenario one, but it's not in scenario two. We would end up to the plus of 281,000, about $282,000 is what we'd end up with the surplus. So, if Kerwin passes, we're gonna see additional revenue because the MOE for the county gets increased. The state revenues pretty much stay the same, and so we would end up with about a $282,000 increase or surplus. So, basically, you're gonna have extra money, so now the question is, what are we gonna do with that extra money? Now, we, just recapping, we're using $500,000 of our fund balance to balance this budget. So, there are three things you could use that extra revenue for Kerwin passes. You could replenish the fund balance, so instead of using 500, you essentially use half of it, and then you replenish what we have in fund balance. You could consider block scheduling. Block scheduling, we said you need four, four and a half teachers, that's about 300 and, I don't have that right in front of me, if I can get that back. $337,000, so you're pretty close, you're pretty close with the 281. Or, the other option is considering additional compensation for, for employees. So, those are really the only three options, or you just do nothing and you let it sit there. But, which, if you let it sit there, then you're really actually replenishing the fund balance is what you're doing.
So, and Joe, check my map on this, too. If we, we have the 282 surplus, if we use that for the 337 needed for the block schedule, then we're only short 55,000, which we could.
You'd probably, you know, you might be able to make up some of that through retirements. Maybe, maybe not. I, I mean, essentially, you just, I think to make it cleaner, you're just gonna have to say, we have to put some more money in some fund balance.
Right. But that's all on if everything passes?
That's all on if everything passes.
Okay.
So, I know there were some questions asked about block scheduling, so let me go through this list really quick just so you have a little bit of information, and then we can just share. You can just bear with me for just a minute, Mr. Johnson.
No, I don't have any questions.
Oh, okay, I thought you had to handle it, sorry. So, Ms. Williams went department by department and just asked how the teachers, and this, and granted, this is not, this is not a straw poll, it's just talking to the department chair just to get a little bit of information. In social studies, only one of the teachers in social studies is interested in staying year-long. The rest support block scheduling.
How many teachers are there?
How many teachers, for instance?
Five or six?
Okay.
Four or five.
Four or five, sorry, kind of went off.
So, they all want block scheduling?
Yeah, basically, that, all of them are in favor, basically, except for one. Science, they really don't have a, a strong opinion one way or the other. They, the only thing that they said is, is AP needs to be a year-long course. It is too hard to teach AP in one semester, it doesn't work. AP does not work in a semester course, it has to be a year-long course. So, they really, they, it was surprising, I thought science would be very much in favor.
We went that way, so they could do their labs and stuff like that.
I'm just telling you what.
No, I'm just saying, I'm, you, I'm surprised.
Yeah. ELA, which is the Language Arts Department, they're split. Have to, have don't. CTE, block all the way. Math, split. Fine arts, PE band, only one wants year-long, the rest support block. And Ms. Williams didn't have a chance to talk to the Spanish teachers. But I suspect they would probably want year-long, but I don't know. I don't know that for a fact, so I'll just scratch that, I don't really know. The other question was, what are the school systems around us doing? The other question was, what are the school systems around us doing? Worcester, block. Wycomico, block. Queen Anne, block. Cecil, A-Day, B-Day. So they're basically doing block, but one day, it's kind of like the high, it's kind of like the cohort. So four classes are on Monday, the other four classes are on Tuesday, and then every other Friday. Talbott is a modified block at Easton, or excuse me, Easton is a block and, hang on. That one is kind of confusing. Because Easton and St. Michael's are different. They have a modified block, so some are year-long and some are semester courses at Easton. Caroline is block. Dorchester is A-B block. So basically, A-Day, B-Day. So that's where we're at with the school systems around us.
Is there any research to show that it makes very much difference in achievement?
I, I don't have any research in front of me to that regard. I can tell you that the AP courses, the research is they need to be year-long courses. So if we start moving towards, if we start looking at Kerwin, and we start looking at modifying how we're, we're doing the, doing our high school programming, you're going to have kids taking college courses in 11th and 12th grade, which block seems to work better for them, if they're going to be taking college courses. And if you're doing CTE, if you're specializing in CTE or specializing in higher ed, block scheduling seems to be the program of choice.
Do you know if any of the current classes would be impacted very much by the change as far as the requirements that they need to make, because we've only been in this block schedule for one year?
I don't have an answer for you there. We are in block scheduling, but we aren't, we are doing it in a way where we are doing an abbreviated day. So the abbreviated day is, you know, is, that's why we have to end as early as we do to provide time for the teachers to have their, their planning time. So, you know, how it's going to impact overall, I, you know, and how it's going to impact the teachers and whatnot, I don't, I don't really have it, because you're right, this is the first time we've been in it. Now, when I first came to Kent County, we were in a modified block. So we had some, some, some classes that were year-long and some that were block. And then we went to seven-period day. So now, so the pendulum is swinging the other way, saying now we want to go back to block. I mean, if that's in fact what we do. But what I would say is, there is, there is not enough money to do block and additional compensation to employees. It's either got to be one or the other.
So that, that was my question. I mean, obviously, the four options that you gave us, you know, one replenish fund balance, two block scheduling, three compensation for employees, or four do nothing. I think one and four are probably not our options, that's just my opinion. Right? So it's either block scheduling or compensation. Do we, so can you speak to the, I guess as best as you can, the placeholder for salary and healthcare increases, just kind of a, you know, I mean, obviously, if we move to compensation, is that, that gets pulled in if we go that route?
Right. Well, it would, it would increase what we're able to offer to our employee groups. I cannot, I mean, I, because we're in the middle of negotiating, I can't tell you what that transfer is going to do, but it could, it could, you know, mean higher compensation is the best thing that I could say at this point.
So to, just in my opinion, I mean, that's, those are the two options. Right? I mean, if we're looking at, if we're looking at everything all in, with the exception of block scheduling and the potential compensation, you know, and looking at, I mean, I hesitate to use the word surplus, but I'll use it. You know, having that $282,000, I mean, you know, it's a matter of what we...
Yeah.
You know, what are, what are...
I mean, that essentially is a gift. That's, that's, otherwise, in order to do block scheduling, we would have had to make some additional cuts. And potentially look into areas that would not be pleasant, and would be fairly uncomfortable in some ways. So...
Do you know what subject areas the forehand additional to choose would be?
I have no idea.
Could we get back to advanced placement? So if we have block scheduling, you couldn't just have them, say, American history, could it be all year-long to two blocks?
Yeah, that's the way it would have to be.
So it would be more time?
Yes.
That they would have?
Right.
The reason why people do that is because the testing is at the end of the year, and so...
Well, because you have to cover so much material.
So much, you know, I mean, when I was in high school, they had just developed AP psych, and I took it in the fall semester, and everything that I had forgotten. The fall semester, ten times of the test, I lost it, so...
Yeah, but you cannot, and I would argue, you didn't even cover all the material that you needed to cover. So they quickly found out. I mean, one of the things that's very clear is you cannot do an AP class in a semester.
That's right.
There is, it's just impossible.
But if, if we have block, we're not going to have to give up AP class. We just have to do it for both of them.
Right. So arguably, that's going to cost more staff in some cases, because you're going to have to plan for that class going two, two semesters. Now, could it take less than four and a half teachers to do block scheduling? Let me tell you where we're at with regard to this. We purchased the two plugins that we need to run two simultaneous schedules at the same time. The staff was trained on that last week. So now, it's a matter of meeting with the students and figuring out what their requests are, and then plumbing in those requests into two schedules. And then from there, we would be able to tell you if we could do it for less. In other words, maybe you only need three teachers, I don't know. But we're not going to have that information, realistically, you're not going to have that information till closer to the end of April. So that's not going to help you in terms of making decisions. So I think what we need from the board is direction in terms of, because we're in the middle of negotiations, and we're also in the middle of trying to make some decisions with regard to this, to the, I mean, they'll still run the two schedules, and we may end up saving additional revenue if we don't need as many teachers. But I think we need some definitive answers, or at least some, some direction from the board, because I have, I mean, I've got the county, the county is waiting for our budget. And I need to know how I'm going to put in my request, finalize my, my budget, present it to you at the April board meeting, and then schedule the budget hearing at the end of April. And I will, probably sometime in April, will be presenting in front of the county commissioners. So I have to have a direction in terms of which way we go. And this information will also help us, inform us in terms of our negotiations as well.
I think with informal poll information, I think it speaks strongly towards going with the block schedule, especially because I would assume that these teachers have done both. So they've had the opportunity to have the seven periods, as well as this year of the block schedule, and they're definitely, the majority of them prefer the block schedule, it seems.
What's we going to do to class size? It, you know, if we're trying to save additional compens, if we're trying to save additional revenue to potentially look at perhaps other options, then I think we look at building the classes with 25, a minimum of 25 students in the class. It might be as many as 30. It just really depends upon how it all works out with the, with the scheduling.
But can that compare to now?
Mr. Silver, do you have any idea where we're at now? I think we're pretty low.
Our, our class size right now at the high school is probably under 18.
Yeah, that's really small. It's like a private school.
Yeah, and part of that is simply because our teachers are teaching throughout the year eight different courses. If we were to go to a block schedule, which is they would teach six during the year, you can see, we're going to need more people to comfortable for doing more larger class sizes.
Well, they're teaching seven classes each. They have seven per day.
Well, I'm saying, this, this year, where we have a semi-block, they're teaching eight. In a regular block, you don't teach eight, you'll teach six.
Six. So right now, their classes are very small. And so to assume that they're going to have 18 students, when they break it down into this teaching six periods a day, it's going to, I mean, six periods a year, it's not going to work out that way.
When they were polled, when they were asked their preferences, did they understand that the class sizes might go up by...
Yes. As a matter of fact, one, one department said, would we get an option to choose if we saw that the class sizes were going to be large? But unfortunately, we're going to have to make, we have to make decisions fairly soon.
I'm curious, how do you get six on a block schedule? I'm used to block being four classes.
You do, you, so...
Yeah, what is the planning?
What's your planning period? Right. So you have a 90-minute planning period, and you teach three 90-minute classes.
Yeah, we're six, I was going to say, where?
Three, first semester, three second semester.
Oh, okay, okay. You're concluding both semesters.
Right.
I was only including one semester.
Silence is definitely, are you waiting for direction on thoughts on block scheduling versus not?
I think I've shared a lot of information. I did ask, I did ask Ms. Williams, she had a preference, and she said, really? She has taught and has been administrator in both of the settings. So there are advantages, which we've talked about, there are advantages to both.
What is the transition like then from middle school to the high school? Are they going from a seven-period day to now this block schedule? Or I don't know what the middle school schedule is like exactly.
I would say, I don't really know that they're, that they're the same as that at all. They're year-long classes. So I wouldn't say that the middle school is operating on a block.
I was going to say, maybe the one adjustment is they're not used to sitting in a class, a class for 90 minutes.
Yeah.
Probably the biggest adjustment.
Right. And I would say that I'm not sure that we've done has, you know, we've lacked in training our teachers in terms of how, how do you really teach in a block effectively? So that would have to be something that we would have to move forward with. Because it's not just a matter of having more time so that the kids can do their homework in class. You know, if you're really doing it effectively, and you're really maximizing your time, then you're, you're working with students, and it's, it's more about teaching effectively in a 90-minute period, and not just using it to teach like you would normally teach, and then just using that extra time for kids to do their homework. That's not really an effective use of block scheduling.
How are you going to get along with our early childhood coordinators?
Well, I can have, I could have Mrs. Jackmose talk about that, but we did put in an early child, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, we would put in an early childhood coach, and just someone that would help with working with our early childhood teachers. So, you know, in the same line as we have our literacy coaches and our math coordinators, just somebody there to help with, help with ensuring that the curriculum is supported and that teachers have what they need, provide some input, do some, some planning with the teachers, additional...
I agree 100%. And we did put in the literacy coach in the early childhood, not the literacy coach, the early childhood coach for the early childhood years. And so I think that would be a tremendous support and voice for those teachers. The role itself is very collaborative with special education. You've heard quite a bit about the infancy pods program. So this coach will work along with, to complement and extend that work into grades A1 and 2. So I think it's a necessary role, but I'm happy that we're able to put it in a grant. Ideally, it would be similar to what Nicole Boyce, who's a coordinator, the big difference is, we're putting it in the grant as not evaluated. So that person will not...
Creative. Now, it's starting to be going through small grouping during that time. So I see block scheduling as a benefit for our students, especially when we're at this point where some of our students are, are, I don't want to say lacking, but are academically, trying to get back academically where they have to be. I think it would be a great, to be creative in ways to use the block scheduling. I think for the CTE, was really telling that they will always stray block, because I know that's extra time, having taught, teaching CTE, like CTE-related class, it is nice to have time for those projects and those types of more inspiration in the curriculum. So that's, those are my thoughts. It would be interesting to see if we could make it work, hopefully make it work. And then to the point of AP, just giving that extra time, I know I grew up with block high school, I had AP government classes, you were able to get a lot more done and have spend time, studying for the intensive spend time, engaging in Socratic seminars and things like that, so I would support it.
And I will tell you, the reason, one of the driving factors for cutting the block scheduling out of our budget was because it, it saved us, in other words, we were able to reduce the number of teachers, which ultimately was a savings for the county. So we were obviously struggling. We had, we had to try to balance our budget. And in order to balance our budget, we not only cut teachers at the elementary and the middle school level, but we cut them at the high school. And in order to do that, we went back to seven-period days. So that's why, you know, that's why it's an investment in terms of, you know, we had, we had no choice, we had to cut the budget, and that was a, that was a decision that was made. And at that time, the teachers were in favor of a seven-period day. So, or at least that's, you know, that's the direction we went, because we felt like it would be a benefit. We added, I think we added another, another period, so that the kids went from six, I think it was from six to seven period. So there was an extra class that the kids were able to pick up. But it, you know, you took it at the cost of shaving off some minutes somewhere else.
Does going to the full block schedule with how it's abbreviated day like we have now change the schedule for the day for students? So it change the start and end time for students at the high school?
If we have what?
If we, if we go to the block schedule, does it change the start and end time of the school day?
No. No. Yeah, because we share buses with the elementary, so as long as we have tiered buses, we have to start when we start and end when we end. So that's not going to change, unless we had some funding to buy 10 more buses, 10 or 20 more buses.
Ms. Silver, are you asking, will it change the way it is right now, or like... Ms. Silver, are you asking, will it change the way it is right now, or like, high school kids still get out at one oh seven?
No.
Okay, yeah, when we go back to a full schedule, it changes the day at all?
So, yeah, no, the only way to, to change the time of starting at the middle school and the high school would be to buy more buses. And, you know, you figured that out, that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars a bus? Times ten.
Would, would there have to be sort of training of teachers to, you know, figure out how to teach in a block schedule? When would that be?
Well, it would, it would obviously have to be something that the administration would have to work, work in. It could either be something that they did during the summer, it could be something that they did throughout the school, obviously would have to be something they did throughout the school year, but they would have to do something before school started as well.
It wouldn't change the curriculum in any way?
Uh, no, the curriculum is the curriculum, so they would just have to make sure they covered all of the standards within the, whether it's a full-year course or a semester course. Um, I also, just, just information, looking at where we're at with other school systems, and Allegheny is year-long courses, I'm just going to go down the list here. Baltimore County is a hybrid, which means some of their schools are year-long, some of their high schools are year-long, some of them are block. Calvert is year-long. Charles is year-long. Harvard is hybrid. PG is hybrid. Somerset is hybrid. Talbot is hybrid. Uh, Washington is year-long. St. Mary's is year-long. And this one said Wycomico is year-long, but they just now moved to block. So, they're staying in block. So, that's, that's the list. So, it's kind of mixed bag everywhere, but mainly, the majority of the school systems are in block.
I don't feel like I have enough, you know, knowledge about. I, I'm interested what Dr. Johnson says, because he's in it, but never having, you know, really worked for these areas, I, I really don't know how to vote for this. You know, I, I, it does seem that more, more than half of the teachers want block, and I, I feel with what they want.
So, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. So, I mean, I, having my son in the school, and having my wife in the school, obviously she's part of a department where it's a full, full choice of going block, and for obvious reasons, and Mr. Johnson, you know, mentioned, having the time to be able to go deeper into content, I think is pretty, is, is powerful, and it's something that, that the teachers, at least those, those groups of teachers are in. My son likes it. It's, it's in a space where it actually now, you know, obviously, he's only a sophomore, so we have yet to determine whether he's, I mean, he will be dual- enrolled, so he'll be doing CTE as well as college-type courses. But, that being said, he is, he likes this, you know, the block schedule. You know, in my opinion, I mean, I think the fact that we have a, a proxy, well, two-hundred eighty-one thousand approximate dollars out there, I am very intrigued about having the simultaneous schedule kind of being run to see what that looks like, because I'm, I'm not sure that three thirty-seven, five hundred's the number, especially thinking about class sizes. I mean, if we go from fifteen to eighteen, or to twenty, I mean, I know that sounds like a lot, but I, I don't know if, I don't know, I don't want to make any, you know, opinions or put any opinions out there to see what that does, or what that implies to every teacher at the high school. I mean, clearly, it's going to, it's going to impact some, and some others will continue to do what they do. But, that being said, I mean, I would be in favor of looking at block scheduling. I just think that, you know, at the end of the day, hearing what, some of the feedback that I get on a daily basis, you know, and folks out there, you know, I think it's our time to be bold and be different. And, you know, we have an opportunity to go into this space, you know, with, with the PD that's involved and kind of working with the teachers, I think, I think that doing that, I mean, as I mentioned earlier in a comment, you know, we're not going to be able to sit on it. So, doing nothing or putting back, I mean, we could, but I don't think that's the right way. I mean, we've just got to think about just kind of stepping outside of the comfort zone and trying something different. That's my opinion.
And from the other aspect, just to talk about management, just, we talked a little bit about instruction, let's talk a little bit about management. Management-wise, it's a bit easier if you're in a block schedule, because your kids are only moving four times a day versus seven. So, you have a lot of times that kids are moving and potentially getting into mischief a little bit. So, you're, you're, they're, you only have four times that they're going to move during the day, and it's a bit easier. If I hear from, like Mr. Wheeler was saying this, making this comment, when, when we went from block to seven-period day, you know, they might be dealing with a discipline issue, and then it would take all of that period, and then before you know it, oh my gosh, class change again, and then they're back out in the hall. So, he said it never stopped, it never stopped. You're constantly, you know, from a management perspective, having to get out in the hall and, and deal with situations. And sometimes, you just don't have any time for it to be peace and quiet for a little bit. But, you know, when you've got your ninety-minute classes, you have a little bit more time where you can like make some phone calls, deal with a, a discipline issue or an issue with students, and you've got a little bit more time from a management perspective. So, I wanted to go ahead and throw that out there, as there are some management advantages for moving four times a day.
Would there be additional planning time allotted as well in, in a block?
Ninety minutes?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It's also more like higher education.
Yes.
So, if you've got kids, like I said, advantages are, if you've got kids taking college courses, it more closely would align with, with potentially what they're taking at the college level. Now, it's not going to be perfect in any means, but I think you were hearing from our student board member, that she was saying that she liked block scheduling, because it aligned a little closer to college, higher ed.
Yeah, someone contacted me a couple of weeks ago about, you know, having more students dual-enrolled in Chesapeake College, and I referred them to you, or to Ms. Williams, but that might help, getting more students dual-enrolled in both.
Well, it'll definitely help with Kerwin, because we have to have kids meeting all of their high school graduation requirements by the time they complete their sophomore year. So, by the time they're juniors and seniors, you want them to be able to specialize in CTE, or move on to dual-enrolled and moving into a college prep program.
Is, is there a potential, then, that we could fill out our CTE programs more, because students will have more flexibility on their schedule during?
I'm not sure, because right now, we're, we're like in the top, we're like ranked number one or number two in terms of having dual, dual completers, which means they're, they not only are taking college courses, but they are also completing a CTE program. So, I'm not sure that that's going to make that big a difference. The difference will be, they'll have to, most of them will have to wait until they're juniors and seniors before they, they move into the CTE program. So, it'll change a little bit about, I mean, right now, they are juniors and seniors anyways, most of them, when they're taking CTE, but some of them might be taking courses when they're sophomores. But, I, until we actually put it into practice, I don't know for sure what it's going to look like. Just the structure in terms of how we want to move forward, and the cost that it's going to, the investment that it's going to be from this board in terms of whether we move forward with block or not.
Are there any further comments regarding the budget?
Now, let me just say this, everything goes by the wayside if, if Kerwin doesn't pass, obviously. So, I think we need to have our, um, but in all, you know, from all of my intel, in terms of information that's getting shared with me, I don't, I don't believe that we have to worry about Kerwin not passing. I think that that is, is a matter of just getting through the hoops in terms of the Senate floor, which is happening this evening. We've already shared the MOE numbers with the county, so they are already aware. And I do have capital, I am going to be asking for a capital budget request, which we'll get to last, but I wanted to share, at least talk about this, so that we can have some, some discussion about how we move forward with the proposed two-hundred and eighty-one, or two-hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar surplus that we, we think that we will have once Kerwin passes.
So, I'm questioning, I'm just curious, are we basing solely our decision whether to go block based on if we get the two-hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars? Or are we basing our decision?
I think both.
Okay.
I think you have to do it on both, because if you say, if, I mean, if we, if, our conversation would be a little different. If we were at a place where we want to block, then we'd have to be talking about, if we want it that badly, then where are we going to get two-hundred and eighty-one thousand, two-hundred, well, where are we going to get three hundred thousand dollars from? And I, and the only way to do that is to cut the budget. And that would be, that would be painful. That would hurt a little bit, because you'd have to take from other places. You'd have to, you'd have to say, okay, that means something, but does it mean enough to then increase class sizes at the elementary school and cut teachers from there? I mean, so you, you, you've only got eighty-five, eighty-five percent of your budget is people. So, you'd have to think about where you're going to cut from other programs and other schools. So, I think, like I said, this is a gift in that we do, we are projecting a little bit of the surplus, and so now, the question is, what do you do with that surplus?
Well, what did the House and the Senate approve Kerwin?
The House has already approved.
Okay. We know how Hoby feels about it. What if he decides to veto it?
They have enough time to override it.
They do? They don't have to wait till next year?
They, they are, that's the purpose in trying to get it done now, so that they have enough time to override it. That's, that's the intel that I would get.
Okay, because doesn't the General Assembly end in about two weeks?
I mean, it's.
No, Ms. Silver, I mean, I don't think it could be as seamless as just having both Houses and the General Assembly approve.
Well, what I would say is that the amount of money that is included in this bill is pretty much contained within the governor's budget as well. So, you'd have to kind of think about it from, from perspective of what would the governor have to gain with vetoing this bill? And what, you know, what message would he send with regard to, it's not like it's going to cost the state any more money than, than is already in there. Um, there's, there has been conversations with the counties, and the county governments have been, um, they have not been openly opposed to this new legislation, particularly when they've got the escalator, and they, one of the things that is included in this bill is looking at and doing a study on county capacity for increasing their amount moving forward. So, this amount with the change is really a small amount versus what, what would, what would be moving forward. Like, for instance, if you look at the bill now, we see an increase from the county in twenty-two, but in twenty-three, the increase is very small. It's, it's very small. So, it'll be interesting to see what that amount, what we actually get from the state. So, this amount where initially it was looking at, the county was going to be putting in millions and millions over a period of two to thirty years, or two to five years, that's not what's included in this bill. So, I don't, I hear what you're saying, Ms. McGee, but I don't know what the benefit for the, for the governor to veto this bill would be ultimately. It's not nearly as controversial as in the past. But, you know, there's always been surprises, nothing's a done deal, I get it.
So, the question right now with what we know is that if we do receive that almost two-hundred and eighty-two thousand, or that, that surplus, if you will, what does that look like and how is that used?
Right. And the other thing, too, is, we could always go to the county and ask them for additional dollars, too.
And if that surplus doesn't come, then we know that block scheduling could, or something, or some combination thereof, could change. Right? I mean, so that's, I mean, that's just where we are.
Right. But I, I think, I think there has to be some discussion from this level in terms of, because it was this board, Board of Education made a decision based on our financial situation at the time, in order to save additional revenue, so that we could balance our budget, we made a decision, and it was a full-scale decision. We cut at the high school level, we cut at the middle school, and we cut at the elementary. And, um, we cut administrative positions as well. So, it was full-scale. We, we made a lot of cuts, and it was, uh, it was really a financial decision that we had to make moving forward, just so that we could balance the budget. It was a pretty significant shortfall that we had projected that year.
So, Dr. Potts, what do you need from us right now?
I need some direction in terms of, you know, I think the high school is looking for some commitment from us in terms of how we move forward. And I need to know in terms of, you know, how I'm going to present my budget. Now, yeah, I just, I would like to hear, hear what the board would like for us to be moving forward, and I think that's what the staff is looking forward to understanding is the commitment from, from the leadership at the board level, in terms of do we support block? And if we do, then are we willing to dedicate this additional revenue towards that? If not, if we're really not interested in that, then, you know, then what? Then what are we going to, where, where will we, what is your thinking in terms of the additional revenue? Do we use it towards replenishing the fund balance? Or do we use it towards considering additional compensation?
Can I ask a question? Because it seems like part of, of, a factor to be considered in block scheduling is good money. So, every year, that's a factor. So, let's say we commit to block scheduling this year, and then we So, let's say we commit to block scheduling this year, and then it's not a rosy picture next year, and that's, that's where we make the decision to go back to a seven-period day. Maybe this could be more a question for Ms. Jackamowos. What does it do to go back and forth and back and forth and kind of lose continuity to that, with that?
Very loud and clear, and I think that's a great question. Certainly, in terms of flip-flopping schedules, it puts challenges for the student schedule. I, I don't know enough to say how great of a challenge, if it's impossible or not. I mean, nothing's impossible, but it certainly would not be smooth for those that are living the change year after year. It would certainly be better to be able to make a long-term commitment with that. And, you know, I think you're discussing all the right priorities. Professional development is going to be one of the top priorities with this commitment, so that we engage the students. You know, you talked about the challenge being transitions, and if they're going to be in that class for 90 minutes, you want to make sure they're highly engaged in learning during that 90-minute block in time. I think that's a great question. I would say there would be definitely challenges for the students in terms of switching, you know, year after year.
So, we, we really have to make a commitment of four years or so, right, to see that work?
I think in fairness to the students, that would be the best decision, multiple years.
Yeah, I would, I would hate for us to make a decision and then, of course, again, we don't have, first of all, so we don't know. I mean, what happens if, let's just talk about, what could be devastating is we don't see the student enrollment. If our student enrollment drops drastically, then something has to give. Of course, if it drops drastically, then we should be able to not only reduce the number of teachers at each level, we should be able to look at that at the high school as well. Keeping in mind that if we go for 25 students, 25 to 30 students in block scheduling, say 25 students at, at a minimum, then we would need to make sure that we consistently do that and then make some decisions based on staffing. Because what tends to happen, I'm just going to say this, what tends to happen is we always tend to look at the elementaries, because they're easier to, to look at in terms of reducing staff. Because you've got one teacher and a one group of kids, so it's easier to pick from the elementary and say, okay, let's just reduce all of the, you know, we can reduce this number of teachers. But it becomes, it becomes harder when you get to secondary, because the kids are moving typically, and, and sometimes it's a little more difficult. We have to have a commitment from this board that if, if it came to a place where we had to reduce staff, then we would have to look at it holistically and not just pick from one level and not another. It would have to be, it would have to be, everyone would have to bear the brunt, I guess you might say. And you can do that by increasing class size. What were you saying?
I had just mentioned that there are multiple counties that are doing a modified block. Maybe it's not an either-or, but is there a consideration of a modified block?
I don't know that we have enough time and people and place to do that right now. I, I spoke with, with Mrs. Williams, and that requires, that is going to require more than just two months' worth of planning. So, in years, subsequent years, perhaps, but right now, no.
It's not, it's just for discussion purposes only, so we don't, it's not an action item. We just have to provide.
I got to build my budget.
Do you, I mean, do you want it to be actionable?
No, no, I mean, I, I, we can go down and, and get general feeling, and I can build my budget from there, but.
Well, Mr. Johnson, I can't speak for you, but I think you're on board for block. I think I'm on board for block.
I'm on board for block.
I am too.
I am for block, yes.
All right? I think I got my direction.
Yeah, I think just a comment, too. You know, we're, we're in, we're in this space right now where, where things are just different. We, we're still not out of COVID, and we still don't know what it's going to look like on the other side. Right? So, if we want to be bold and do something that might have the opportunity to effect some change and do some things. You know? The one thing I've learned in just my 4.3 years of being on the board is that the, the board has responded at different times to different things, and, and although maybe not popular all the time, but it still had the opportunity and the abilities to kind of adjust and, and move forward. So, I mean, I think whatever it looks like in two months or two years, you know, we just have to be bold and think outside the box and do something that, that might be a little different and, you know, supporting everyone along the way. Okay?
Okay. So, this is information about replacing the roof at Kent County High School. You'll see that the roof is a pretty expensive commitment. So, it's about $7 million for the, the roof replacement, and it will have to run over a two-year period, because the, the, the size of that roof is such that you cannot get it done in one summer. So, it's going to take two summers to get it done. So, if, in fact, I would, I would go forward and ask, and I'll show you the breakdown of what it means, what the breakdown would be for the county. But the entire roof, once you add in A and E, and also for the project manager, all of those things add up to about $7, $7 million. So, the county share would be $3.8 million, and it would be spread out over, over two summers, FY '22 and FY '23. And then I would also request money to repay the central office parking lot, which we received several quotes, and that's about what it's going to cost to, to repay the central office parking lot. And that could be done in one summer as well.
May I ask a question on the, on the capital budget request? And, and I know it's not on here, but it kind of falls under. Last year, the year before, there was a lot of conversation about the middle school?
Yeah.
And so, the high school roof is?
As far as how it was put out in our facility's master plan? It was always planned that the high school roof, the high school roof would go first. And the, the capital improvement plan that you guys approved last year had the high school roof first.
Okay. I just, I wanted to just, because I know that that's something that's been discussed in public.
Once we're done with the roof, then we've got to start figuring out what we're going to do with the middle school. And the middle school is either, well, first of all, you know they need a new roof. They need major renovation inside the building, and, and there are some other deficiencies that are going to have to be addressed. So, the question is, where is the breakpoint in terms of how much money do you put into an older building, or do you look at building a new, a new facility?
Didn't we make a recommendation to do a study?
That is a, what we would, what we would recommend to do is a, well, we talked about having a, oh, God, I lost my train of thought just left. Yes. A study in terms of determining whether the, the facility, where's the breakpoint? Does it make sense to renovate the building? How much does it cost to renovate the building? And, or how much would it cost to build new? And then where's that breakpoint? The good news is, the state is already involved in doing some facility site visits, and they've already completed their, their review of the middle school. And there are many of the areas within the middle school that really do not meet adequacy standards. So, you know, feasibility study. So, whether we want to do a feasibility study or not. Now, that would have to be funded by the county as well. And just in my discussions with the county, they are not, they are not 100% in favor of feasibility studies, because they're very expensive. In this case, we're probably looking at $60,000 to $75,000 for a feasibility study, and they feel like that money could be better used in other ways. So, I think this is just one of those discussions that we'll have to have with the county to see which direction they want to go. Now, if you'll recall, we kept Wharton Elementary, because that was probably a piece of property for us in terms of, is that ultimately where a new middle school would be constructed? That's, that's another conversation for another time, but that's certainly something we'll have to look at in terms of once we complete this roof. But, yeah. Middle school is going to be a big, a big discussion. So, the request for the capital budget for the county would be $3,880,000.
Okay.
This is a presentation.
Are there any other questions regarding the budget with this work session? No?
I'm just about to talk a little bit. Are we, I know that, that the state only kind of awards some money to, to different counties for different projects. Are we limiting our chances of if we decide to do a middle school new construction or something?
No, I, no. I think, I think honestly, Kent County has been at the table, at least requesting money from the, from the state for renovation projects. And I've been very proud of the fact that we have really methodically moved through the list of, of projects. We listed short-term projects, and we listed long-term projects. The middle school is a long-term project, obviously. But one of the things that we had on there was to replace the track as well. And so, as you know, that was finally approved from the IAC, and right now, that has gone out to bid. And we hope to be able to bring forward a recommendation with regard to the track and it be replaced during the summer.
Okay. We go on that work session, the budget? Okay, the next item on the agenda is moving into closed session. This is an action item. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, Dr. Karen Calz, the superintendent, Ms. Red Silver, supervisor of human resources, and Gail Manley. Executive assistant to the superintendent, will move the closed session under general provisions, Article 3-305B, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific, specific individuals. Before I ask for the motion, just a reminder that it will be coming back into open session after this closed session, so I'm just reminding everyone that's watching at home or in this room. Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Some of them.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Welcome everyone back to the hybrid budget work session meeting for tonight. Today is March 29, 2021. We're opening the open portion of this meeting back. The first item on the agenda in this portion of the meeting is to report on closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members of this board, Dr. Karen Kaufst, Superintendent Mr. Ed Silver, Supervisor of Human Resources and Gail Manley, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, met in closed session under general provisions, Article 3 dash 305b, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. This session was for information and discussion purposes only. No action was taken. The next item on the agenda is the notification of the next meeting of the Board of Education. The next meeting of the Board of Education of Kent County will be held on April 12, 2021, beginning at 5:30 p.m. with the open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 p.m. This meeting will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, 5608 Foundry Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland 21661, this building, this room. The last item on the agenda is to adjourn this meeting. The administration is recommending approval to adjourn this meeting until we have a motion to do so.
Can I ask a question before we go there? So where, because there was a lot of discussion about it. Where are we in terms of, in terms of the public? Or we got a loud public starting in our equal meeting? And what did we decide about archiving all that?
Uh, we are, did we record this?
Yep.
We did. Okay, awesome. Okay, thanks.
It's been recorded. As far as the public, um, I, I mean...
I didn't think we had made any decision, but my editor Dan had said that if he wanted to, he could have, the media could have come tonight, correct?
Yes. I thought it was coming, but it didn't, yeah. So anyway, so where, where are we at with the public?
I thought we left the last meeting and pulled it off for a couple meetings till we could figure out.
No, that's fine. I was just trying to get clarification myself.
Yeah, but allowing the press, I thought that's, yeah.
We were saving the meeting.
All right. And we're archiving ourselves.
Is this the first time doing that, that picture-in-picture with the...
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It's ice cream.
Yeah, so I would like to, since you brought it up, there's a different look to the meeting online now. Because one of the things that we brought up is oftentimes we put up a PowerPoint and you can't see it on the, when you're watching online.
Yeah, they couldn't see any of the slides.
But now they can. Okay. Now is a new look. So not only can you see what, see us talking, but there's a small little window and on the window is the, is the PowerPoint.
And I can show you, we can also...
We can show you afterwards.
Yeah.
That's a nice improvement.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that'll work. And, um, you know, what else? Oh, we also have it to where if you come up to this podium, he installed, Mr. Poor installed another camera so you can see, like when Elisa was talking, you could see her instead of, you have a better screenshot of her.
Great.
Or anybody who's at the podium.
Thanks.
So Mr. Poor went to a lot of, of extra work to do that. So I want to acknowledge the extra effort that he did to, to improve what we're doing online.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, the last item this evening, approval to adjourn this meeting. The administration is recommending that. Do we have a motion to do so? They have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
It was second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing them, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?